All right, I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that our board members is present at this meeting and been clearly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda. Motion made by Robert, seconded by Scott, all four. That's seven oh. At this time, Robert should be the leadess in the prepared.
All right, let's pray. Lord, we come to you today to thank you for your mercy, your grace, and the many blessings that you give us daily. But, Lord, we ask you to protect the school and this community from this COVID virus that is spreading throughout the country. Keep those that haven't calmed down with this disease safe and healthy. And those that have got this disease, we hope that they feel your hand upon them and they recover from this disease. Now, enter our hearts and our minds as we make decisions today on the business before us, and that these decisions will have a positive impact on our district. And forgive us where we fall short of your glory, and help us be alighted to others. We send your asking Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's do our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one individual. All right. Dr. McCullough, do we have some special recognitions?
Yes, sir, we do. We have several. As you see, there have been several things placed on the table up here for the board. Each campus went together and did something, I do believe, for each board member. This is, January is always School Board Recognition Month. And at this time, I want to recognize our school board and the job that they do is, if you don't know, each one of them come up here and serve faithfully each month and sometimes more than once a month, as well as, just like teachers, they're required to get training throughout the year as well. And so, they do that on a volunteer basis. They choose to do this and don't get paid to do so. And I would dare say that we have the best board around here. This is a great group of seven people who work very well together and always work hard for you as a staff, as well as for our kids in our community. So, if you would, please help me in honoring our board and thanking them for what they do. So, there's a proclamation that I want to read. It does say, "Whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society in an ever-changing world, and whereas a local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas the local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now, therefore, I, Jason McCullough, Superintendent of Mount Vernon ISD, do hereby declare my appreciation, my appreciation to the members of the Mount Vernon ISD School Board and proclaim January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month. So, again, thank you, thank you for what you do and how you serve our students and our community. We appreciate you very much. Thank you." All right, so next, our employees and teacher of the month. So, we will start with our auxiliary employee of the month, and that is Mr. James Evanson. James serves in our technology department and is housed primarily at the middle school campus, which is where he was nominated from. It says, "James is a lifesaver." Big word there. James is along well with everyone around him and is friendly and pleasant to work with. He properly responds to our needs in the classrooms and is willing to help with any technology needs. He goes above and beyond to help anyone and does not shy away from jumping in to help rearrange a classroom or assist in removing cabinets, et cetera, to be of service to those around him. He is very appreciated, and the middle school is lucky to have him. So, our auxiliary stepping of the month is James Evanson. Want to speak? Want to say anything? Okay. Next, we'll do our elementary teacher of the month, and for January, it is Ms. Megan Law. So, it says, "Ms. Law always sets a smile on her face, as you see, and embraces each day with a positive attitude. Her positive energy ignites enthusiasm among all members of our campus. Ms. Law displays commitment to the success of her students, as she always goes the extra mile to ensure the success of all students. It is evident that she cares deeply for her students and effortlessly builds relationships with each of her students. To know Ms. Law is to love her. She arrives early to prepare for her day. If you were to walk in her classroom, you'd see all students engaged in learning. We are blessed to have her as a part of our Mount Vernon Elementary School family." Ms. Megan Law. Want to say anything?
Thank you so much for all the support. Thank you.
Our middle school teacher of the month is Ms. Marty McCoy. Says, "Marty McCoy is an amazing asset to our staff. She gives 110% in everything she does for Mount Vernon Middle School. Co-workers have claimed that Marty McCoy is a true teacher, whether it is to be, whether it be to sixth grade students, students who are participating in UIL events, or other teachers who come to her for advice and encouragement. She is willing to help in any capacity that she is called upon to perform. She cares about her students, not only here at school, but she worries about their futures, too. Marty participates in professional development because she wants to keep becoming a better teacher, even after 20-plus years here at Mount Vernon. We are blessed to have her." Twenty, how many?
Twenty-three.
Fantastic, very good. Okay. Twenty-nine total. Very good. Another colleague states that Marty serves as a great team leader for our math department, always willing to help in any way she can. She is a great mentor to new and old teachers alike. She works tirelessly on providing the best education for our students, searching for the best materials and practices available. She is concerned for all of her students equally. Marty is also willing to speak out on issues and concerns that we all may have. We cannot say enough good things about Marty. She will charge to find new and productive ways to reach the needs of her students while also stepping in to assist her colleagues to reach students in any way she can. Marty places Mount Vernon ISD high on her priority list, and we are very fortunate that she calls Mount Vernon Middle School home. Ms. Marty McCoy. Speech?
No.
No. And for our high school teacher of the month, Ms. Dee Ford. Said, "Ms. Ford has been a great addition to the team here at Mount Vernon High School over the last couple of years. One of the things that makes Ms. Ford so unique is her ability to form strong relationships with even the most challenging students. It is always encouraging to see students who generally lack enthusiasm or engagement in school thriving while in her classroom. On a daily basis, she is working hard to deliver high-quality instruction to her sophomore and junior ELA students, and she has worked diligently to continually improve her instructional practices. She is willing to have professional dialogue and will always make her best attempt to implement new strategies into her classroom. Outside the classroom, Ms. Ford always handles her professional responsibilities in a timely and efficient manner. She is an excellent communicator with administration and peers alike. In addition to her classroom teaching role, Ms. Ford has been the main homebound teacher for the high school and has spent countless hours over the last year delivering in-home instruction to students after school hours. She has never said no when there's a student in need of her help because she has a genuine desire to see them succeed both in and out of the classroom. We are forced to have Ms. Ford as a member of the Mount Vernon High School staff, and she is more than worthy of being named teacher of the month." Ms. Dee Ford. All right, if all four of you will come back this real quick, get a group picture.
Is anyone here to speak it up in forum? Marty, where you on going?
I'm actually going to a church meeting.
Yes. Church meeting. Thank you. Y'all have a good one.
He has to come back.
Eric, thank you for saying. All right, so no ones here for the public comments. At this time, we need to consider the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? I'm gonna hit lead on this. It doesn't matter whatever that means there, but, okay. So, if there's no questions on the consent agenda, I need a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. That made, this motion is made by Linda, it's taken by Leanne, all four. That's seven four. So, looks like our action item, your next. Automating. Consider and approve Tasby Legal Policy Update 118 affecting many following local policies.
As you saw in your, in your board packet, update 118 deals with several different things. The majority of what it is, is a lot of word changes. You saw the markouts from the red and additions of the blue. Instead of going through each one, I'm going to, open, if you have questions, we'll look to answer those. If not, then I recommend approving the local policy update 118 as presented.
Any questions on those? Well, first, no further questions on that. We need a motion to approve Tasby Legal Policy Update 118. I'm gonna make that motion. You'll have a second. That's taken by Robert, all four. That's seven oh on that one. Next, action item, item B. Consider and adopt order for the May 7th, 2022 general election. And...
Have that in your book as well. Call the board election. I think the calling, actual calling is in your board book as well, in your board packet. Call that for May the 8th, I believe is the date. Seven, sorry, May 7th. Any questions on that? Early voting will be from April 25th to May 3rd. On the location? We will. So, right, so there's also what we're looking at doing, I'm sorry, thank you for bringing that up. We've been offered the opportunity to join with the county and do it. So, if we do so, it is going to change the location. I still, I still recommend, let's call it for the election tonight, and then in February, we will, per your voting, to join with the county will change and we'll make the change in regard to the location of the voting places at that time. I think so.
Yes, that'll all be on one ballot.
Yeah.
Were those machines we bought a couple of years ago?
We'll use ours as well, I think. No, we won't use ours at all?
No.
You'll use the county's, period?
For this one, we had to have a special election, which has not happened in the 22 years I've been there, to have a May Saturday election for the county. And in that, she has agreed to let the other entities piggyback on us, and it will all be on one ballot. Anything they can vote on will be on the same ballot to make it easier for the voters. Well, this one really won't be bad because it'll be just your normal, the school election. I think the county will have two propositions that were left off of the constitutional amendment election last November. And then, if there's any other entities in the city, if the city has anybody run, I guess their current people, they'll all be on that.
So, if we do a final election, it's good to go for that, too?
Yeah.
Election Code, Section 3.0005 requires political subdivisions to order their general election, and the requirements for the order are outlined in Section 3.006, 85.004, 85.007, 85.007A, and 83.102. Positions are up for election this year. There are Aaron Sanders and Leanne Ramsey. At this time, I need a motion that we, as a board, approve the order of election for the May 7th, 2022 general election as presented. Motion made by Brooks, seconded by Linda, all four. Seven oh. Item C, consider and approve buyboard vendor proposal for bus purchase.
Brought for you another opportunity to purchase another bus. Bobby's gone out and got the bids necessary to do so. Another bus added to our route and extracurricular fleet. Buyboard proposal from Rush Bus Centers for $107,075.27. Make that recommendation, approve that.
Any questions on that?
And this is the one that's coming out of this room.
Okay. If there's no questions, I need a motion that we approve the buyboard proposal of $107,075.27 from Rush Bus Centers of Texas for a special ed bus as presented.
Sorry, it's not special. I know where the bills are, but it's not. I had to misprint on the recommendation that you, that's in your board book. This is for a route extracurricular bus.
Okay, is there one before that?
No, the second one, it was a tassel in the, it was tappled in your board book.
Okay. So, this one is...
This is for a route. It'll be for a route extracurricular bus.
Okay. Then I thought I said the wrong number, too, right?
No, it's right now $107,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Motion made by Brooks, taken by Robert, all four. All right, seven all on the route bus. Okay, so here's the next one. Item D is, "Consider and approve buyboard vendor proposal for special education bus purchase."
So, what, what this one is, is you approved the purchase of a special education bus last year that we were hoping would be delivered in August. It was not ready. There's a wiring harness that they were saying that they could not yet have it delivered for us. They finally got the wiring harness. When, Bobby?
September, end of September.
In September. So, when they finally got the bus together and ready to deliver to us, it was in an accident. Rush says it's somewhat cosmetic, the pictures we saw, we were not completely convinced it was cosmetic. We talked to them back and forth, so to see if they would, we were not gonna pay new money for a wrecked bus. And so, therefore, we have now gotten bids for another bus. And so this is an increase of $15,000 per se over what, what you'd approved last year for the, for the same bus. And so, so again, we still, we still have the deed for the bus, and so we're asking for your approval to move on with this.
About, when would we get this bus? When would we get it?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll swap drivers. Okay. I make a motion, we approve by board proposal of $111,291.27 from Rush Bus Centers of Texas for a special education bus as presented. I'm just thinking about this Rush Bus Center, it's not very much of a rush. But do I have a second on that? Leanne, second, is it? All four.
You made a motion, you made a motion.
Seven-oh, I made that motion. And there's a seven-oh vote on that. Discussion items. All right, Facility Committee Update.
Okay. Ms. Mary.
Okay. So I'm gonna go through a quick review of what we decided last time. I know holidays have all happened since then, and we may all need a quick reminder. So this was the presentation from, I don't even remember the date, but the last time we met, with some of the numbers associated, I'm just gonna rush through some of this. So really, the feedback we decided was to take out the ag barn. The school district felt, and the committee all felt, you could do that more efficiently in-house. Not to enclose the breezeway, we still will have secure entrances at all the locations, but just not an actual airtight breezeway. We were going to minimize the cafeteria expansion and utilize more of what's existing with some expansion. So kind of meet in the middle there. And then I had homework to go back and look at trying to move athletics back into the first proposition. So I have a lot of different numbers here to show you. And with me, I have Michael Holmberg, he's one of my partners at NARA. He's also our Director of Marketing and can speak to the actual PAC campaign and pushing out the bond itself. So, so we're here as a resource, and as always, Christian is here as well to talk about the actual financial numbers for it. Okay. So for each of these, I have a scenario A and B. So earlier in the, well, today's Monday, so I guess today, Jason and I were talking about some of the different ways of looking at this. And he also asked me to look at VoAG as either doing renovation plus addition or just a brand-new VoAG facility. And this is for the shop specifically. So all the shop, all the dressing rooms, like we discussed, storage and associated classroom with that. So I've been, the existing shop space is about 12,500 square feet. I've been budgeting about 20,000. So it is a substantial increase in size, but that can give you an idea of what you would get for this. So this scenario 1A, I have gone back and revisited the numbers. So the ones in green are the ones that have changed from the last presentation. So you can see the baseball field athletics has been moved into Prop A, which obviously reduces the total for Prop B, which remains more of the football and the stadium side of it. Reducing the food service. And then for VoAG, you can see this one is the renovation plus expansion. If we go into brand-new VoAG facility, it's about a difference of $2 million because, well, the new construction, that's the delta. Because we can also save on less renovated dollars that needs to go back into VoAG. So these are the differences you can see here. So we're looking at either 44 or 47, including baseball athletics. Now, looking at scenario two, this is if we are going to keep baseball athletics in this, in Prop B and that second proposition, and just how those totals started shaking out. And then similarly, so A and B, the numbers are really the same for VoAG. It's just the totals are the ones that start changing. Yeah, so this is largely the me of what to talk about tonight. Mike and I, and I believe Jason, we've started the conversation of if this committee wanted to do a third prop and actually break out the main project, as I'll call it, and then baseball, and then football. So I have some of those number scenarios here too, if you wanted to visit that as well.
And just for context, if we're gonna do those projects, since there's several facilities with some of the SB law, SB3 laws that came out for long elections, those would most likely have to be split up, split apart anyway. So we would have a main Prop A, which we've, the fine arts and the main facility, and then the football stadium and its upgrades, and then your baseball stadium and everything. So just from the new laws that came out with SB3, we would probably have to have those three props.
Okay, so I guess that was gonna be my question. So what you're showing here in scenario 2A, I mean, I guess from what Christian was saying before, Proposition B is not doable this way.
We would have to have an A, it would be A, B, and C.
Correct, okay, okay.
But the baseball softball can be lumped in with everything else though, legally.
Correct.
And I think the discussion was, at first it was, can we do an athletics prop? And then we actually have a request, and the attorneys have a request into the AG's office, because this is kind of new territory, as far as figuring out exactly what constitutes a required new proposition. So right now, we're thinking it would probably be three propositions if you wanted to cut the softball-baseball out. But it could technically go in A for sure. Football would just have to be standalone because of the size.
And on talking about a new VoAG, where would that be located?
Kind of what I, my thought would be, be in the parking lot out here beside the, beside the building. And so my thought in regard to that was, Mary and I have talked briefly about it, is, is, you know, in the, in the construction process, if we're gonna just strictly renovate the ag facility, where do we hold ag for the year that renovation is taking place? You know, so looking at the opportunity of, of space, and again, I didn't know the, until Mary had shared the number, didn't know for sure what the number would be, of what that would look like if we built brand-new. And then there still have to be some type, some renovation to that, that space, but it might not have to be extensive is, is what we're looking at from a cost standpoint. So could that be, you know, so maybe that could be the classroom pieces. Instead of, you know, so the shop area itself, the brand-new shop area is a brand-new shop, but then we were able to, to renovate the current shop to be classroom and, and, you know, dressing rooms or things like that, if doable. So therefore, we have a place to hold them while we're doing the renovations of that piece. Or we're still not just holding, but have class.
Right, is there a way, I mean, would it all be connected?
Well, I think that could be done, couldn't it, Mary?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So that it's all one, so they don't have to have in and out, the range, or whatever, security?
Yes, we'd make sure of that.
I even had a thought, well, the connected part is a little different, but if you had, if the baseball does end up moving, you have all of this space too, that you could build a, more of a standalone shop out there. It could be a pre-engineered metal building, it's gonna be more cost-effective that way than if we were doing conventional construction. So the dollar figure could go down some. But that's kind of banking on the baseball being able to...
I think if it did move though, I, I don't think that that's an option. I think as much as we talked about security and when you get out, out there in the future, I think that, this is just me, but, I, Teacher Ingram, what would you say? You know, I mean, we do, we do have a gym that they have to walk to, but maybe, well, we would have that free space. Some of that orange up there is, the south side is gonna be that shed, so a lot of that is space that we could probably start construction on, I'm thinking.
Well, there's good and bad to both of them, you know. Granted, standalone is great when you're pulling in troopers, that, that kind of stuff. But we've been talking big time about security. Well, that's not gonna work, you know what I'm saying? So I think you have to go with it up here, just for the security aspect of it.
And so, which, Mary, I know you have it going, I'm gonna say east-west right now.
Sure.
But so, so if we do shop by itself, would almost look maybe in that parking lot be north-south, maybe? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, absolutely.
Could you go behind from the end and do like what you're talking about, a prepav, but then connect it somehow where it's enclosed between the existing and the new, where it's a covered enclosed hallway, for lack of better description, between the two? Yeah, put it behind, straight off the back there, yeah, right there.
Yeah, I mean, all of those are...
One sheet, sorry, what did you ask?
Once we start the actual design process, we can definitely explore that.
Get into our transportation yard, the bus yard.
So that, that orange space up there, is that the 300 square foot you was talking about?
That part is existing, and my block is about 20,000 total. It's a negative.
Okay, that's 20, and it was.
It's, the whole area is 12,500.
Going out like that right there is about 20.
But Mary, in, in this also, is it giving us a classroom for animals sign or full design? And some lab labs for that too?
Yeah. I mean, so your, your existing actual shop open space, I'd say, it was a little over 5,000 square feet. So however we want to divide that up. It was, when we get to the actual design part, yeah, I'm just trying to get a budget.
So in essence, you can, you can increase the shop size that we currently have almost double and still have room for the, the classes, rooms that we're talking about. Yeah, because you've made it much larger.
Right. So, and that is part of it. So in the expansion, I'm adding 7,000 square feet onto it. So either way, you're getting about 20,000.
And I'm just asking, because this wasn't, is, is that, that number just facility cost, correct? That's not equipment, that's just facility cost, correct?
The equipment gets factored into my soft cost amount, which is the totals. So, so whenever I have down here at the bottom, the rule of thumb is usually about 20%. So these numbers are all construction cost. And then this is gonna be all the furniture and the equipment you have, all the testing, architectural fees, all of that, that is part of the cost of building a new building. But it's, the way I have it shown on this spreadsheet is more of a percentage of the total. So I guess, talking about VoAG, what is the feeling of renovate and expand or start new?
I would like to see new, but that's just me. I think we just, I mean, we've renovated this and we renovated that, it's just like, what am I supposed to do?
So that part of the building was built in 1978.
And, and my thought is, if we're looking at doing new fine arts, you know, I'm, I'm, I know it's not a brand-new cafeteria, but it's going to look brand-new when we get done with it. Then, then why not do the same thing with, with VoAG as well? And make it, make it as, as mu, as much of a showcase piece as what we're trying to do on the front as well.
As far as security, I know we're trying to be more secure, but we've got kids walking down to the gym in between every class. I mean, I don't see any difference in them walking to the gym and us walking to the VoAG building, half the back.
Going out on the playground.
If they're, if they're going, so it's, if, if we're talking, are you still talking about the softball field location?
Yes.
Little difference with, that would be, will be, they will be crossing parking lot and where buses come in and out at different times. I mean, it's not, I'm not trying to dispute what you're trying to say, I'm just saying, they're, here they're walking down a sidewalk, there unless we, and again, I guess that could be done differently, I mean, something could be done differently.
We can revisit.
Okay?
Reroute the buses around the back of the ag barn to the, to the bus parking lot and then...
Okay, so, so I'm hearing new. Is everyone in agreement?
From the committee standpoint?
Okay. Well, the, the remaining thing to discuss is the, the props. So if we wanted to baseball in A or separate it into a C?
If you put it in C, you're not gonna get it passed. I think it's standing alone, there's not enough people that think it's important enough to get done and it'll be... If we're gonna get it done, the only way to get it done is to get it passed in A personally. That's what I said.
That way it's not, they're not the only ones that, that doesn't need to be, it needs to be addressed.
I agree with you, but I don't think you, I don't think it's right to put your wants with your needs.
Right, no, you're exactly right. I mean, I, I don't think it passes, but I think that...
So do I draw my adage and do I vote, hey, we want this, so we're gonna put this with the stuff that we really need?
I'm afraid, yeah.
But, nothing you explain right to.
I mean, they need it, they need it in field, they can't play, they can't hardly ever play on our fields if it rains. Rains, not floods, rains. So it's not fair that we even think about doing this and not doing that. And is it as important as the ag? Maybe not, no, you know, not really. But it is important to know that our kids that are the softball-baseball kids, I mean, they can't even have a game, they had, they're constantly going to somebody else's field to play ball.
You poor kids, you poor kids, it was a facility.
And I don't think that it'll, that it'll pass if it's by itself. It'll have to be in here in order to pass.
And I think we just have to make it known, that's why it's in Prop A, because it couldn't go with football because of the capacity, so...
I think it'll pass, and I think it'll help this other prop, I'm just saying it's unethical to me. I think you can get a heck of a lot more votes out there in the baseball field, you know, when we're trying to pass this deal, than I can go out in the country and try to get to vote for an ag deal. So I think that the baseball deal would probably help the other deal. I just, in my heart, me having to be the one that's gonna raise my hand and probably vote for this, am I gonna be all right with saying, you know what, I mean, I've been doing all these wants and needs for a year and what we need, and now I'm putting the, you know, I'm having to put on my big boy shoes here and figure out what I'm gonna do. There's seven of us that's gonna vote on this deal, and that's what we're gonna have to figure. Because yeah, I mean, I, I kinda say, I see what y'all are saying about the baseball deal, but I think there's a lot of people out there that we can go and, and talk to at the baseball fields and get to come vote for their kids in the future to vote for that baseball deal, so...
So you're saying put it in Prop A, not...
I'm saying, I don't, I mean, I'm... I'm saying, I'm saying, I see that we probably have to put it on Prop A, but to me, it's not right, because you're mixing your wants and your needs. Like that's how they, that's how they have stuff done.
It is a need, it is a need.
No, it's not a, it's not a need like a, um, an ag shop or.
I said, I said that, it is not a need.
It is a need, but it's not a, we're fixing to take this to the next level and go out and, you know, make a living out of the deal. We might have somebody come out, and I know these, some of these kids, that's what they need, but as far as an educational deal, and we're all passionate about different things, but as far as making a living, whenever we get out of here, and that's what we're trying to teach these, you know, these kids on, this career tech stuff is, we know it's hard to find people to work right now. We're gonna train some kids to work and that ag facility is gonna be the one thing that we have, whether we're using just for ag or if we go into some of this stuff we're talking about on, you know, building houses and different things, that's where this career tech deal is gonna come out, so.
Eric, can I ask you a question? Cause I don't, I don't, I don't think anyone in this room would disagree with you on the importance of ag and what our kids need and that is lacking right now. But I also, I guess my question for the ethics and what you think is fair. I'm also looking up there and I see a big chunk of that going into fine arts and media, or not the media, sorry, but just, it's all, I, for me, ethically, it's encompassing all the kids. So yes, ag is definitely special, no one's here talking about cutting it out, but we also are thinking about our band and yes, football's a big part of it, but we're including, in my mind, everyone in that, does that make sense to me? So where in your mind is the hang-up between that being wrong to include it?
Uh, I guess because it's an athletic deal, probably, kinda like the football.
But my, and that's my question though, but, and I'm not trying, it's extracurricular.
Most of this other stuff though is probably touched every day, you know, or has kids in it a lot of the day where your baseball fields and your other stuff is not gonna be touched, you know, with three, four months out of the year and used for different things. And I mean, I know where we're at and I know what I'm probably gonna have to do, I just don't, right now I feel right with it in my mind, I wish, I wish we could put it in three different props and know that that was the way to go and then we could make it happen. But I'm just, what's my opinion? Cause what's the odds of passing three over pa, you know?
So there's two schools of thought here, I'll, let me start off by saying, y'all are in the business of educating kids. We're gonna have to be in the business of educating older kids about adoption, which is going out to the public, which y'all do on a daily basis, that's what y'all in the business of doing is education. This is, it's gonna be all hands on deck, we're gonna build a lot of tools to go out there and talk to, to your community about this of why. Cause this is really, of spending a year together, of walking through this process, of developing all this data, developing all these costs, the tax impact, all these things. We're gonna have to get out there and explain why all of these are needs, I mean, and I, I do the same thing of wants and needs. I'll be the first one to talk about breaking those things. But just talking about, hey, when it rains, the football fields, the baseball field's good, you can't play on. Same thing with fine arts or food service or academics, they're all lumped into what you're doing of educating kids. So, um, I would, I would, don't get hung up on the Prop A, Prop B, or C. Um, just cause again, Austin gets in the mix of changing laws and moving things around. There is certainly a, uh, some voter fatigue and you're gonna have additional props, especially if you're hearing from accounting and some other things. So they're gonna have quite a few props on there anyway. I think the biggest key here is going out there and explaining why, again, give you a bunch of tools. So how we go out there and talk about this, and I, I'm with you, cause I follow that same trap of sometimes saying, well, yeah, here's academics and here's fine arts and here's athletics, but we can break those apart, but it's all about educating kids, cause you're educating kids on athletics every day, your coaches are out there talking about leadership and getting out there and all these things, so there's, there's education happening there too. So, um, I know this is kind of a swan song here, but again, don't, don't box yourself in of just saying, even if there was four props. So there's been bonds that have been Prop Four, Five, and Six that have all passed. So if we go out there and do our job of educating the public, of getting out there and touching everybody and making sure they understand what, why we went through this process and why we're bringing it this time, I think it'll be successful. Uh, so just don't, don't think that because you have X and Y props that you'll split the vote or someone will say, okay, well, I'll give you this and I won't give you that. It's typically about the why, of why you're not, and explaining to it, most people are rational when it comes to it, saying, yeah, we, this makes sense. And it, but go, we're gonna go talk to people and we're gonna, we have a very short window to go educate the public about this.
Yes ma'am, please.
I, I understand your point that athletics is not academic and it's in the academic proposition, but I also think that the baseball and the football and the band and any of those types of electives are college opportunities, scholarship opportunities for kids, so it may not be something where they end up being a pro baseball player, but it might get them to college where they can pursue whatever it is that they wanna do professionally, so.
I could think of five off the top of my head, in the last several years they've gone to college on scholarships, in both of those, softball and baseball. And that's just like that.
Well, I, I guess I just wanna kind of be devil's advocate, because in that line of thinking, you should actually be moving fine arts out of Prop A. That's extracurricular.
They're all like.
So, I mean, following that reasoning, then you should do a Prop C that's fine arts and baseball softball. If, if that is, if that's the need.
And honestly, but what we've had in the past, like Linda said, goes, you know, gets launched, the most student statements we have coming up are baseball softball here. It's phenomenal, like we have some good student athletes coming up that deserve that.
Well, in the short time that I've been here, questioning why we don't have a more robust program, yet we have a school of kids playing select. If you look at the quantity of parents, and I'm looking at my group run. So I mean, I'm looking, Scott, I mean, everybody, all your kids are in baseball and softball, but yet they're not in our program, and my question is why? And every time it's facilities, every time I ask that question. So it's not because we don't have kids that are interested in the program, it's because we don't have facilities that have been kept up for our kids to play in that program. That is me coming in as an outsider only hearing when I'm asking that question to the community. Don't shoot me, just sharing what, when I ask why it hasn't worked.
I just think that's, that's the only way that some kids are gonna get to college. They're not gonna be able to afford to go for whatever reason, and I hate to deny them an opportunity.
When we have to play on other fields because ours are too wet, we pay.
Not just, not just the use of the facilities, but the travel to, the use of us.
350? Again, do you remember? I know it's a year ago, I'm sorry.
But we could.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be able to charge game admission if we do this, too.
And we can host, we can host other, you know, playoff situations from our district. Ball game, it's too wet for their players.
I, I wanna think that last year we, we rented Grand Selings Baseball Field, I think, three times. For some reason, I wanna think it was 350 for one game, 500 for two. Don't hold me to those numbers, but I wanna think that's pretty close to what it was, so.
And not only that, I know that Coach Carroll had to cancel JV games because we had to get a varsity game in and you can't play two games on a wet place, you can't, so he would cancel JV games, those JV kids weren't getting to play to accommodate the varsity for him, so I mean.
I'm not a very athletic-y person, but I did a survey of all of our high school students about what motivates them to be part of our school at all. And 64% said athletics and extracurricular, what motivates them to pass their classes and get some involved. They like their teachers, they, they care about their parents, that they come to participate and they will keep their grades up and you can, you can typically see it fall in some of their grades when they don't have an extracurricular, just saying.
It's a lot of what keeps kids at school.
So I guess that was my, so if you wanted to do a senior and like, you know, what your thing is, that's why I thought then move fine arts to.
And I'm not saying don't do it, I'm all for it.
Right, you're just saying where is.
And I see where you're coming at on the fine arts, but I just don't. It's different, I mean, there, there's kids in that band hall every day, a bunch of them. So those things that are.
Fun in the theater and like, you know me, I'm all about when I play, but.
Right, they're, yeah, they're not gonna use that.
But you could break that out on its own and put it with the baseball, softball, the theater stuff. I mean, you can divide it up on guns away, really.
Well, I feel like we're jumping all over the place. It's either, it's either all encompassing, it's about all the kids, or we're nitpicking of, well, this isn't used as much or this isn't needed as much, and we're kinda getting all over the place, in my opinion. So for me, in my mind, it's what's the best for our kids, what's the best for Mount Vernon, and how do we get it done? That's what I'm asking. So are we gonna get it done, putting it under A and doing B? Are we gonna get it done doing A, B, and C? That's what I'm thinking, because I think we need all of this for all our kids and all of it's important. So that's kinda where I am, and I don't know if, how nitty-gritty we wanna get, but, and I'm asking for feedback, cause I just feel like we're starting to jump everywhere. Just jump out there.
Yeah, so from a mental, uh, frame of mind piece, if, if football wasn't required to be on its own, would we be doing a single proposition?
I think so.
So to me, to me, I think that is part of the education piece. We wanted to do a single prop, but we were forced to do two, we didn't wanna burden you with three, so here's two. I mean, that's one way to frame the education piece to the community. It's required to at least break this out. Otherwise, we'd be putting the whole thing out to you as a single prop anyway, so, you know.
And we're gonna go, and we're gonna go to educate the public about this, we're not gonna say, okay, Prop A. We're gonna talk about the whole, that's when we, you can go talk to the public, we're gonna talk about, hey, this is gonna affect every, every kid, every, every teacher, every, this is gonna, this is what the bond is about, it's about upgrading your facilities to, to increase opportunity, re-ready this, going to college, you know, all these type of things, that's what we're gonna talk about, that's the messaging behind all this. It's not, well, scenario one B. We're, we're, we're gonna lose the faith if we're about that. And I, and I understand this is, again, it's a critical decision and it's a hard decision that y'all have to make. But ultimately, as Christian said, yeah, if, if Austin didn't force this upon us, it'd be one and we're gonna be off the run. But here we are, so, but again, the message at the end of the day, when we're gonna go talk to the community and going to civic groups and different community groups and go to the churches and talking to everybody about this, it's gonna be, let me tell you about all the opportunities, don't have great things that we can do by passing this one. That's the message that we need to talk about, not, well.
So all in, uh, for everything, we're looking at about 52.3. Do you wanna talk about how that breaks out?
So for the 52.3. 52.3, um, would be a projected tax rate increase of about 13 and a half cents. Uh, the average homeowner would see about, uh, just over $20 a month for that increase.
I'm sorry, and you're saying the average homeowner, that was on the 200 and?
222-809.
Okay, that would be.
Yep.
Well, people are digesting that, can I ask you a question in regard to the, to the food service, the 3 million for the food service? We were talking last month, I think that you had put that that was to seat 300?
Yes.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So currently, we can seat 200, 225?
Yeah, roughly about 200.
So are we, are we taking that 200 into, so we're only gonna add another, basically seating for 100 in the kitchen? Are we adding 300 new, so?
I think it's adding.
Adding 300, adding seating for additional 300?
So, um, I had square footage over actual seating, so I'm adding 2,000 square feet onto the dining area.
Okay, so I'm telling you, so I'm telling you if that's going to make it just total seating of 300.
It would be enough.
Okay, okay.
Cause I, I wanted to keep it at two lunch periods.
Yeah, which is, because we discussed, in order to go to just one, you would have to increase it a lot, even more to allow for future growth.
So, all right, so.
And then full kitchen, which is in the kitchen.
Yeah, how, how much square footage for the total kitchen?
Uh, 5,340.
Okay. So that, that's going to be serving, serving line, kitchen.
Cook space.
Yeah.
Table storage.
Okay.
And back to what Mr. Ingram asked about equipment, if I remember from the last one, that didn't include new actual equipment that you're gonna need in the shop.
We're pretty good on that, I've been here 12 years and I, I've been able to, uh, with, working with boards and everything, we've got some pretty good equipment. I made, I made a little bit, like some handles and things like that, um, but I was more getting that, is it gonna take care of our classroom stuff, all our furniture, you know, that stuff? You know, if there is a little bit for some, you know, some things, but I mean, we're, we're pretty good, I mean, our, our ag shop is pretty good. Equip, if you look at the surrounding schools.
Well, don't you think that lip thing that flips the.
Now, yeah, now that, that is the, the, oh, red crane, that, that would be nice. But as far as like equipment, like welders and, and, and that kinda stuff, we've got the big ticket items. Uh, I bought them the last few years, as long as they can be transferred to the, to the new.
And when we get to that design phase, we would go in and take inventory of everything and make sure we're.
We got the right stuff, the right power, the right stuff, and that, that's what I said, you know.
And layout. Do you wanna take a vote on the prop, the two props instead of three, just to get a show of hands real quick?
Okay, those in favor of two props? Three? No props? Just that, I mean, there's, they're asking two, I guess.
Those are not action.
That's right, that's right, struggled, that's right. So it seems that, seems committees looking at two, two props.
Yeah, I, I think from hearing all of that, it sounds like this is basically the game plan.
Yes.
Of what's up on the screen right now, right? So next, and everyone good? Okay, so next steps, uh, last meeting, we did talk about assigning the, I think, were you the person?
Yes, I, I volunteered, yeah.
Yeah, volunteered.
And I, I was talking to someone who's great with them, who said, a community member should probably do it. He said, I mean, I'll do it if no one else wants to, but definitely probably come better for my community member. Um, because I, I give a, I got a lot to gain from this, so I'm just showing some bias.
And it could be certainly a group of people together, so.
Like it needs someone who, I can stand up there and talk, as long as it's not just me, I mean, I just think it would be better, but I'll also do it if needed, it was definitely better.
So is there a community member who would be willing to make the presentation and recommendation to the board? Okay, boy.
It's a Monday.
Should be Valentine's Day, the 14th, Valentine's Day.
It's very romantic, though.
We can make it the first action item, so you can leave afterwards.
Yeah, I, I would be glad to, but no, okay.
Thank you, Ryan. We can, we'll work with you very much.
Well, it, I mean, everything can be typed ahead of time, where you're basically just reading, that's right, so, yeah.
So, we're, what's the numbers here, fifty-two million?
Fifty-two, three.
And I mean, we're parents, y'all are parents in here. What's your community gonna say when you go out here? I mean, we kinda started here about fifty million dollars, and then we were talking, you know what? We're gonna step it up to twenty, and then maybe a little bit more, and now we're at fifty-two million dollar bond in Mount Vernon.
You're getting a lot.
I know, we're a lot.
Twenty dollars a month, that's a good decision, but if you're, if you're trying to sell something, and really help my kids, if I was gonna go back and say, oh, can we afford another twenty bucks a month for something that's gonna be spectacular, which always I think is an easy yes for us.
I'm thinking of people, though, that don't have, what about these folks that don't have kids? And, yeah, it's twenty dollars a month, but, you know, I can spare it, maybe, but some others can't somehow. Are we gonna be able to, we don't really have another choice, if we really start shaving this sucker, but is that where we're at? Can we do it? Or will we just blow off in here?
Well, if you pulled it out and said it was safe-
Y'all are the community, but there's seven of us that can put our name on this, and, I mean, obviously have to go to work.
No, if you pull it off-
Not paying a job, I got some prizes up there for a school board member, and I was okay, it was great. I do this as a service, but, you know, I gotta get people behind me, and not just some parents. You know, might go both.
What if it means adding restaurants, shops, and growing the whole community, not growing schools? And our kids come back, and the kids go out and, and, as, as band people, we went to several competitions, and the lines down the highway getting into Whataburger, Taco Bell. If we had those things here, the kids would come back here, they have something to say, oh, we're gonna go back to Mount Vernon because we have opportunities. Right now, what do we have for opportunities? You go up on the square, you're, you're gonna go to Stevo's, the Childhouse, Mel Edwards Burger Place, and if, if we don't grow our school and keep people coming back, they're not gonna succeed, and the community's not gonna succeed.
I agree. But I think you go to some of these other towns, and they're even a four-eight size school, and they don't have any more opportunities than what we do, that's just how it is. You know, businesses have trouble surviving here, so, that's why I'm saying, I'm not gonna put my name on this, and do I ask these people that don't have kids, you know, are you, can you vote for this? I don't wanna put something out there, I don't wanna just come in here, man, and we're all done ho in this meeting right now. And I'm all for this stuff, I mean, I'm been on this thing for the, the get-go, but I gotta sell it. You know, when everybody else goes home, this board, and this superintendent, and WRA, we gotta get out of here, and we gotta go to some places, and we gotta be able to say, you know? I mean, I know that, that, um, cost of living went up seven percent this year, and this, this, and this, and cars are higher, and electricity's higher, but can you give us twenty bucks a month? You know, we gotta run, do some selling, so, I gotta figure out, can I do that? But, you take off ten million dollars, and it's not gonna take off that much money per month, so.
So, the forty-seven Prop A only, um, takes it to just over eighteen dollars a month.
So, one, one thing I always say to my folks, that don't have kids in the community, because I get that question a lot, is that, and usually my response is, well, did you, did you go to school here, did you grow up here? Well, someone paid for a bond for you to go to that school, that's how we fund new facilities. So, someone previously voted yes to, to build that school, or that addition, or that football field. So, yeah, you don't have kids right now, but someone did that for you that didn't have kids at that time, this month. So, it's just telling that story, again, getting into the why of all the opportunities, all the things that we're gonna talk about. That's, this is just a great thing to talk about, just, you know, again, you know, my kids aren't, or, my kids are, I've been paying taxes, and I live in Richardson, my kids were, were not using those facilities, I voted yes for that bond. They were using them, so, I mean, they're, they will be using them in the future, that's why I didn't vote for them. But if I didn't have the kids, I'd still be, I'd still vote yes for that bond, because that's, it's education. This is about growing our community, this is about, about kinda stacking the wood higher for the next guy. So, I think it's, again, it's gonna take a lot of work, it's not, it's not, it's not shit.
You know, and, and I'm saying, hopefully, it comes down to exactly what, I mean, it comes down to what's great about where we live, the country we live in. You know, we, we believe that this is something that we need, and something we're willing to go for. If our community does not believe so, then they're not gonna vote for it. And so, if they don't vote for it, then we have to come back and sit down and say, okay, begin to ask why, and to see what, is there something different we need to do? But at least we've put it out there for them to say, this is a need that we have, this is what we think can best benefit our kids, to give them the best education that we can, the best opportunities. And then if we can communicate that to them, and if they can believe in that, then I believe they're gonna vote for it, and, and we'll be able to move forward. And if, and if they say no, then again, we come back here to this room, and we have these folks and others say, help us figure out why. And then we go again, if that's what we decide to do. So, but, but again, it's one of those things, and I know you're on board a hundred percent, Aaron, and I know you are. As you said, you've been from day one, everybody, you were one of the first ones to start the conversation. Um, again, it's one of those things, I, I think that we, that we, that we put out there for the public. See what, see what they say, and give them that opportunity to, to, to make it happen.
Not only growing our community, but keeping what we have here, because students have opportunities to go to other school districts that are offering what we don't have, so that's something else to talk to.
The great thing about bond too, is that a hundred percent of these funds stay in Mount Vernon. Versus, you're like M and O, where, you know, people don't understand about school finances. Y'all collected, it goes straight to Austin, they pay y'all back. This, this money will stay here a hundred percent in your community, which is, again, a lot of people don't understand school finance. I don't think anybody does, a hundred percent, but, again, but it's, again, another great story to tell about, again, this is gonna, this is gonna be in your community a hundred percent, so just being able to talk about that as well.
Okay.
And if somebody fusses about it, I mean, it's knowledge to know, you're paying less than, less than two dollars for this facility.
For the reason.
For the extra.
Eighteen dollars, if it's twenty dollars, then it's two dollars a month.
While we're at it, I'd like to turf the, um, the playgrounds at the elementary. For real. We need them on there, so. I'm not gonna put Eric on the spot, you know, but I mean, that's, I think that's a big need. That's something that's touched every day, it's a funny point, you know, you got a lot of folks down there, and it's yucky. So, we're going this for a little bit more, so let's add that. What do y'all think? I really think whoever does, we give the opportunity to do our turf, oughta throw it in for free.
Just saying.
Turf guy here?
Yes. Give you our business week.
But I mean, that's as much of a need as a, a softball field, you know? Yeah, we've got a, we've got a playground up there, but go up there after it rains, or two or three days after it rains. Am I wrong?
No, not at all.
No.
And, uh-
Here's my only, here's my only thought on that, is I'm not saying turf's not the right answer for that. But I, let, let's take a look at some other things that are available. I mean, now, if turf can be put in for free, that's great, but, but the everyday wear and tear, especially in the same spots of what turf is gonna do, we'll have to replace that almost every year, at our cost. So, there are other, there are other things out there that we can, that we can put around those areas, um, that will be used, that might be more long-term beneficial to our students, as well as a safer fall zone than even what turf would be. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to say not do it, but let's, let's take some time, let's, let's see what we can figure out in regard to what might be some things out there we could add to it.
My favorite product is the rubber surfaceing for elementary, it's super spongy.
But Garbage has, has a turf. Did y'all do Garbage? They, they have a turf, um, playground, and it has the rubber under the swings and everything, like you have, but. Eric, well, how long would, if you, if you had turf up there on that playground, and they use it every day, would it, is a year about, you're gonna get out of it, or is, um, how long would a turf playground last with kids, little kids using it every day?
If you get good turf and put the right pad on it, you should get xed ten years out of it.
The sun gonna be your biggest enemy?
Everyday wear and tear.
And how many times wearing the turf is witches?
Well, you feel like you're still gonna have to have your rubbers, that rubbery stuff under the swings, but, but that addresses that area, because if you're moving your, if you're moving your athletic facilities up here, you have a whole lot better looking.
Said the rubber is a much longer, right?
And you don't have to have rubber, so, if you put the right pad in, it addresses the hit criteria, which is, is what you're addressing on the fall from the equipment, so.
On the swing.
Uh, most of the time, you just put some of that scat of sand in it, just to keep it, take the wrinkles out.
Do y'all do that, do y'all do many playgrounds?
We've done four for Melissa and Ashley.
Just recently, in the recent building-
The last one we did last year, but over the last thirty years we've done.
Uh, you know, when we was talking with probably Semetry or somebody before, they was telling us that, you know, you can, you can pound on that turf and use it hard, but your worst enemy is the sun, you know, is if you fluff it or do whatever, the usage is one thing, but the sun is what makes you have to, I know usage isn't gonna get anything, but-
At the indoor, you can get fifteen, sixteen years out of indoor, just because you don't have UV degradation, so.
I will say that the turf, talking about tracking stuff in, those little rubbery pellets- Yeah, they kinda do get everywhere.
They're in shoes, they're in-
My boys play indoor soccer, and they get everywhere.
And that would be every day versus just on rainy days?
Do you have to have that filler in the car, that, those little things?
You gotta have some, you gotta have a fill, I've, I've got multiple options, and then have to be rubber, but.
But regardless of what that material is, we can definitely look at having some cotton. And I'll look, I'll look at the, does the playground currently have a concrete curb around it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's expensive. Yeah, we have the kindergarten and the field, right? It's not gonna be that much. I would, I hate throwing a number out, it's gotta be, depending on how big they are, it could be, sometimes. I don't know how big they are.
Well, a good part of the, the larger playground is already concrete. So, there's, so when you look at the square foot of the actual playground, half of it is already concrete. So, what they have to do, but just, but that concrete is, I'm aware, it's, I mean, kids get hurt. They skid their knees and things, so if they have something that they could play on, that they could sort of bounce a ball on.
It's not gonna, that's not gonna like ruin me.
Yeah.
In terms of fifty-two million dollars, we can add that.
Anything else? Anything else from the committee? Board, any other questions for WRA or for Christian?
And Mary, those numbers are like probably way on the high side.
They're conservative, guys.
One, one thing, too, just the same way they use conservative numbers, we ran today's rates, added a half of a percentage on top of that to run our numbers for the tax rate increases as well, so, we're very, very confident that we can come in under the number that we're proposing.
Okay, alright, so Christian, timeline, um, so May seventh, it passes. From that point, where are we in regard to?
If the candidacy election, just like you do with board election and all that kinda stuff, I would get a reimbursement resolution executed, which allows you to start the design work with WRA.
Okay.
Um, and you can pay out of M and O until the bond funds come in, which would probably be September.
Okay.
And then when the bond funds come in, you could reimburse yourself for the exact dollar amount that you had already spent, just to get the ball rolling on the projects.
Okay.
Should we look at moving this meeting up to the seventh, off of Valentine's Day? What's our timeline on, uh-
Business office, that's a question for y'all, is that doable?
Eighteenth is the final day to, to call.
The eighteenth, okay, so we've got two days in there. So, the fourteenth, we still have plenty to have.
Okay.
Enough to call another meeting, which is the big-
You're just looking at, if something was to go down, and we had to call another meeting, and we did this on Monday, the fourteenth, and we had, you know, something went down, and we had to call another meeting, we had to have seventy-two hours to call that meeting.
Right.
So, we would have to call that meeting the next morning, we move it up to the seventh, that gives you just a little bit more cushion. But, business office, Sam, you know, does that?
Go by Richard's. Mary, does that work for y'all, if we do that?
I think that's really smart.
Christian, that work for you, we do that?
Uh, seven?
Yeah, I think that's a really wise-
Because somebody-
Because I won't be here on the-
But you'll be here on the seventh?
I won't be here.
Everybody else good?
But I think that was a point about the time. I think that's really wise.
Not this year, not this year, not this year.
Jason, I can't do the seventh, but I can have someone here.
That's fine, thank you. Alright, so, fair play to myself, I know that as well.
Yeah, and for those of y'all on this committee that meant for last week, if you were here last month, that seven hour meeting we had, appreciate that. So, because, kinda takes a lot of your time away from your families.
For sure.
Alright.
Well, that's, we got five fifteen again.
We'll start at five fifteen, maybe next round, we'll start at five fifteen. Thank you for putting more information out.
Roma totals?
Yeah, Roma totals, as of, um, the fifth, um, we had enrollment of fifteen twenty-three, that's up from comparatively forty-seven from this time last year. Um, we'll give you an update, if everybody's wondering, um, we, um, attendance rate for the last several days, we came back from Christmas at about a little over ninety-two percent. Uh, on Friday, it was eighty-five percent, and today it was eighty-eight percent. Uh, we are seeing, of course, some, some students and a few staff who are sick, we're monitoring that daily. Um, I know that, you know, there are some surrounding schools who are having to, some do some things, we are not right now. Um, you know, we are committed to have classes as much as we can, of course, if, if staff becomes the, the culprit of, of sickness, and we can't, we don't have, no staff to cover classes, and that's when we'll start looking at making decisions, um, regarding, uh, an alternate calendar or schedule. Uh, as well as, you know, students, if we have a, if our student numbers continue to grow, we'll look at something as well. Uh, thankfully, we do have a three-day weekend coming up, uh, this weekend for everybody, and then the following weekend will be a three-day weekend for our students, as we have a staff development on that following Monday as well. So, hopefully, we can continue to go through and not have to, um, take off any more time, and we can keep our school calendar the way it is right now. We still have, um, we have a little bit of room in regard to, um, some buffer minutes, not a lot, because, of course, we, we took some time, some early releases and things like that, uh, through the playoffs. Um, so what we'd be looking at, if we have to, if we were to have to do something, uh- do something, our two bad weather days would be what we'd have to look at more than likely of being in school, if we have to take some time off. So, just, that's just kind of an update in regard for the committee as well, and it was the board to kind of know where we are right now, so...
If you get calls, you know, I mean, that's the thing, if you let out of school, then it's not your school that lets out, it's things go up here in the weekends, an extra period, you know, I mean, I'm guessing if you're out of school, you can't probably do a UIL event, so you're not just canceling school for a day, you're canceling a bunch of stuffs, but we depend on y'all doing that thing.
Thank you. Well, I want to one more say, that we had a call, phone call with the Commissioner of Education on Friday, I expect another one this week, I think he'll get back to the weekly phone calls, so the, the direction we're given in regard to student quarantine or student, or teacher quarantine, kind of is changing somewhat, it's a little bit of fluid, a little fluid, so we'll stay on top of that, Jennifer's our point person on that, and so she will tend to stay on that as well, so we'll, we communicate that as it comes, and we'll continue to do so.
Okay.
All right.
This time, the board convenes in the closed session to discuss personnel matters, it's posted on the agenda and allowed by Texas Government Code five-five-one-oh-seven-four. Time now is six-thirty-six. Thank y'all.
It is nine twenty, the board convenes back in the open session.
President Dargo, professional contracts to recommend, we do have one resignation to acknowledge, and that is Ms. Gloria Agee, who has turned her resignation to the end of January.
Okay, any further business? This meeting adjourned at nine twenty-one PM.